Would you join, join me in the pledge allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment, anybody for public comment today? I don't see anybody unless someone's, okay, so moving right along this, it'll be opportunity. Ever had just reviewed the minutes from last week?
I have.
Yes.
I've seen no additions or corrections.
Is that a motion to approve?
I will make the motion to approve.
The move by Christian Knoll, second by Christian Quinn, all favors signify. Commissioner comments and committee reports, I got one today. Jill Vaughn is been here thirteen years, he's been our maintenance supervisor. He's, he is kind of that person behind the scenes sometimes with a hammer, nails and stuff, you don't even hardly see him. He's been a great part of our county those thirteen years. He's retiring on Thursday. We wanted to have cake or donuts, but he didn't really want the fanfare. So if you see Joe, make sure you're congratulating and it's always nice to see people move on and I'd like to thank you for all the service next to the county. Okay, that's all I have. Casey?
I just want to remind everyone that April is county government month and so we're celebrating by doing some employee spotlights that will be shared in the future here, hopefully yet this week. Also, we're doing a coloring contest and the, they are available online, you can just right click and print them yourself or on our website and then we also have hard copies up here in the lobby of the courthouse. All ages are welcome and our residents of senior village will be judging those, we'll do first, second and third place on April thirtieth. So definitely come up, participate, get your kids a coloring sheet and we'll be displaying them in our hallway out here for the public to see up until the thirtieth when they're judged, so. Um, over the weekend, I got a concern by a resident that thought that her recycling efforts were not being upheld and she thought they were being wasted. Wanted to clarify something because this seems to be a common concern with the public. Our current solid waste facility has one building and what we do is pull up a trailer, dump the trash into the trailer. For recycling, the building is clean, the floor is cleaned off and then the trailer that is brought in is a specific recycling trailer that goes to a Ham's Recycling Center down by Lawrence. So from the public perception, if you're sitting in line and you see recycling being dumped out on the floor in the same spot the trash is pushed over the edge, that would easily be misconstrued that your recycling is going to the landfill. However, I want to assure everyone that is not the case. It's specifically scheduled and the trailers are swapped, the recycling goes in on a clean floor, put in the trailer and then that goes down by Lawrence and all of the waste goes to the landfill in Perry, Kansas. So Stacy Wagle, she's our director of solid waste, gave me a personal tour out there and explained the processes and that's one misconception from the public that I just wanted to make, make everyone aware because again, what you think you might see, which is an easy confusion when it's the same building and the same floor, so.
So you know trash talk.
I'm learning, I'm learning. So yeah, but I think if one person has that concern, others might, so I thought I would clarify that. Also, we had a joint communications meeting last Friday. We're working through cleaning up the resolution wording in there so that we can kind of remove the gray areas and get it down to a fine line of what's expected by everyone. That was good. And that is basically what I have right now. Oh, there was a nuisance complaint and we handle those by working with our partner at Northeast Kansas Environmental. So there's a process that we follow. If anyone's interested, feel free to reach out to me and I can give additional information on that.
Okay, I'd just like to remind everybody of the upcoming tax sale, which is the twenty first at ten o'clock at Memorial Hall. Please pre-register for that as it may need time to make sure that you're an eligible bidder before the process can begin and it's going to be at Memorial Hall because of the social distancing. So please, if you're interested in the property, come prepared and good luck.
I think one other concern I got over the weekend was potholes on one of the chip and seal asphalt surfaces. I do want to say that the concerns are all be fun, they're all being funneled through our road and bridge department. Kim Glover and Joe Snyder are handling all of those and they have a log that they're keeping track. So definitely reach out to them and if you don't have their contact information, let me know, I can provide their email addresses or their phone number and we are just all working as hard as we can to address everyone's concerns. There's a road plan in place and we're making progress every day, so just please be patient with us and your concerns are being heard and we'll get there as soon as we can, so.
Okay, um, this morning in our workshop, we talked about the annual solid waste management plan review. I guess that's trash talk too, so our director Stacy Wagle did a great job of preparing it. There was a few adjustments we made today and it will be presented to the state for review. I do need a motion to approve the solid waste, annual solid waste plan. The move by Commissioner Knoll, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, so be ready to vote, all favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Corey Scott, are you on?
Yes, I am. Afternoon, everyone. I'm coming forward before the board this afternoon to seek approval to go forward with accepting the Firehouse subs Public Safety Foundation grant for the purchase of a new heart monitor defibrillator in the amount of thirty-five thousand seven hundred and four sixty-one. Again, this, this is a fully funded grant opportunity that we've been approved for. They will be contacting us on or before May fourteenth to go forward. So as this is outside of my budget authority, I would like to ask for the board's approval to move forward with this grant opportunity.
Chairman entertain a motion to approve the grant application.
So moved.
Move by Christian Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Knoll. Any further discussion?
Just like to say congratulations to Captain Breyder for writing that and securing it for you guys. I think that's awesome, so.
I would want to mention that because we're going to give this as a grant, we're going to be able to actually buy a second one?
Correct, that was my next.
Or you might talk about what are defibrillators are nineteen years old or something at the end of their life cycle?
Yeah, our LifePak twelve defibrillators were purchased at various different times, but they are no longer supported technology from physio control. We're going to start having difficulty keeping them up to date and compliant with current medical standards. Some, some of them are right at twenty-two years old, but they were purchased between two thousand and two thousand and six by various agencies at this point that no longer exist and we've inherited them and refurbished them and repaired them and, and kept them going as long as we possibly could, but they're definitely past their lifecycle. So this is mission critical equipment we need to move forward with. So this grant puts our capital improvement plan at least a couple of years ahead and we do have money in the capital, or excuse me, the ambulance equipment fund and I would like to get permission to solicit bids for a second identical monitor to be purchased approximately the same time as this grant one, so we can be ahead of the curve instead of behind the curve like we have been with some of this mission critical equipment.
I think the biggest thing that interests me is that there's an opportunity to save a life or more lives, several lives. So it is mission critical, as you said, so.
Yeah, this isn't a luxury. This, this is a heart monitor defibrillator. These are used on every single call we go on for the most part and absolutely is a lifesaving piece of technology.
Have, has the, the ones you get now, are they a lot more sophisticated? Are there a lot more features? Cause you're, when you're talking about electronics that's twenty years old, I can only imagine in other fields that's really apples and oranges when you're comparing.
Uh, in a lot of ways, they will accomplish the same tasks. The people that purchased these monitors in the past had the foresight to purchase them with the most advanced technology of the day. What's going to change for us is one reliability. Two, there are some advancements in medication and how specifically electrical therapy is applied, not to go too deep down rabbit hole. But the big improvement's going to be, yes, they will do a lot of the same diagnostic things that the old ones do, but they'll be more accurate and more reliable.
Yeah, twenty-year-old technology when it comes to something like that, that's its time. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, passes three deserve. Thanks a lot.
We didn't make a motion on that second one.
Oh yeah, the, the second one that if I can go ahead and solicit bids for a second monitor.
Okay, I thought we made a motion.
You made the motion on.
Accepting the grant.
Accepting the grant.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion, okay, so I'm sorry. We still need to vote on that, so. We just, okay. Okay, now we need a motion for the second defibrillator.
I'll make a motion to accept this.
Second.
Okay, let's move to seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I see you ready to vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. Joe Snyder, the opening for twenty.
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
For twenty, twenty-five fifty truck and dump bed.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Uh, yes.
Joe.
Yes.
I have received three seal bids. One of them is for the truck bid and I have two for the dump bed. I have one for the dump body. I'm going to open the first one I have for Foster Ford. Foster Ford, after the government pricing is going to be thirty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that's signed by Scott Foster. The details are on the second page as far as the specs. The MSRP on the vehicle is forty-six thousand seven seventy-five and the government pricing is thirty-eight thousand two twenty-five. And the second one I'm opening is from American Equipment Company. The total on this bid, it's for the twenty-twenty-two Ford F-five fifty with an eighty-four inch cab. So this is the bed itself, the rugby eleven foot eliminator dump bed with fixed sides, two to three yard capacity. The grand total on this is thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-eight. Quoted by Kent Yane, Y-A-H-N-E of American Equipment Company out of Kansas City, Kansas. And the third I have is from Nap High Truck Equipment out of Kansas City, Missouri. It's prepared by Eric Borvat, Borvat, B-O-O-R-V-A-R-T, out of Nap High. And the grand total on that is thirteen thousand four sixty-two.
I would just like for you guys, for everyone to be aware of that we had sent the truck to four different, four dealerships and posted it on the website like we were supposed to and it was our understanding that they were all going to reply, but they didn't. I just feel like that's something that you guys should know that that was done. And the fifth one said they wouldn't bid it, so. We, we did all we could to get more than one bid, but I was expecting more. And it would be my opinion here that we look at the bids closely and go over them and then discuss this about accepting it next week.
That'd be great.
Sounds good.
Yeah. What else we got, John? Do you have a?
I have a, I would like to present the P O for the tube order with metal sails in the total amount of thirty-three thousand eleven dollars and forty cents. And per our discussion this morning, I would recommend that we do this.
The chair would entertain a motion to issue a purchase order of cover materials in Jefferson City, Missouri for thirty-three thousand eleven dollars and forty cents for the April tube order. I have a motion.
So moved.
Move back Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Knoll. Any further discussion?
I think it's just worth noting that of that thirty-three will be reimbursed for approximately twenty because it's orders that we're doing for our townships. So just, just to let everyone know about that.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I just don't want any public perception as the county ordered thirty-three thousand tubes and why aren't they being put in everywhere for the county?
Thirty-three thousand doesn't go very far when it comes, as many as we need to put in, so. Anything else, Joe? Okay, see you next week.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of appointments. The first one is a representative to represent the Eastern Division on the Atchison County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Kevin Bryant, like a point, Kevin Bryant. That expires April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The Ashes Board of Commissioners also appointed Martin Asher as general public representative to Atchison County through the advisory board and Martin Asher will receive service representative, as this, this term expires on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, how is this person chosen? I mean, just, I'm not, I haven't been on that board, so I was just kind of curious how this process works.
Shelley, on there? Yes, I'm here. Actually, Judge Asher has been on the board and he was just reappointed. He's been on the board, I believe, since the beginning. And Kevin Bryant, oh, it was brought up before the board. This will be his second term. We needed an education appointee and he is a sociology chair at Benedictine College.
Okay, I, I didn't know whether they actually solicit more than one or they just, I mean, you know, trying to get competition for this or is that just?
No, we were trying to get competition for it. We just wanted someone who'd be productive for the board and you know, had a little bit of background in it and.
Sure, sure. It's not a criticism. I'm just kind of trying to understand the process a little more.
Oh, I didn't take it as one.
Okay, okay. So the chair entertain a motion to appoint Kevin Bryant and Martin Asher to Atchison County Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Also move.
Well, second.
The move by Commissioner Knoll, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, passes three to zero. And now I have another one. This is for the, the Atchison County Board of Commissioners to reappoint Holly Steckler Suttonley, Matthew Ramsey and Tom Wazer to serve a two-year term as representative on the juvenile correction board that expires in twenty twenty-three. Now this board is a co-board with Lovewood Community Corrections. Anything you want to add to that, Shelley?
No, they are all reappointments as well.
So the chair will entertain a motion to approve these three appointments.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Knoll. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Shelley, anything else you want to move up to make one? Okay.
No, I see her. Get picture there.
I think that Pat and I needed to just talk to some things with you guys, but I think it needs to be in a closed meeting.
Well, I, you know, I, let's talk after the meeting. I, I, I don't think you have necessary. So we talk after the meeting.
After the meeting, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And there's all unfinished business before the board that I have on the agenda. County Council updates.
Well, you mentioned the tax sale and it is coming up eight days from now, so please register. And also if you register, you will get on the email notification list if properties are removed from the sale because they're redeemed or for some other reason. We do ask that you register prior to the day of the sale. Somebody shows up at the sale and wants to register, we'll do our best to try to get that done, but we're not going to hold up the sale if your registration takes longer. And part of the registration process includes a search of the records from the treasurer's office and to make sure that there aren't the links with taxes and if that takes a little time, you, you may not be able to bid on the first several properties if, depending on how many people were trying to get registered then at the sale. You can do it ahead of time online and that's what we recommend. AtchisonCountyKS.org, look for tax sale and there's a link right there to, to register for the sale. The only other thing I would mention is that Commissioner Knoll and I have been meeting with the cities of the third class to talk about neighborhood revitalization. We've been to Effingham, Meskona and.
Just the two.
Yeah, okay, and then we're going to the Lancaster's and I, I think we've had a good discussion and I think we've gotten good feedback and hopefully we'll have some commitments from them on how they want to how they want to move forward in the, in the future as part of the next, the next project for the next hand dream. That's all I.
Okay, I, I haven't tried to register myself because I'm not buying anything, but I had a citizen come up to me telling me how easy the process was to do online. So I think if passive courage is on the line, I think it's a lot easier for you than us trying to do it remotely from Memorial Hall, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'd like to move, move up fourteen point one before our executive session, so. That's going to probably await the executive session. I don't want to hold that piece of this up. It's resolution number twenty-twenty-one fourteen seventy-nine. Wes, can you explain that to everybody?
I'm not sure which resolution you're talking about.
I'm talking about the sixth resolution extended the disaster declaration.
Oh, okay, sorry, apologize for that. So basically, we've been in disaster declaration since March of twenty twenty and we just continue to keep extending that until the Corona coronavirus is over and, and we're no longer in this situation. And what that allows us to do is get resources from both FEMA and from the state if we should need to, need that. In the beginning, we did need a lot of resources from the state. Now we're not to where we're requesting resources as much, but we don't want to not continue the declaration and then be in the need of asking because then we, we get told no. So it's just an extension for ninety days on before you.
This is, okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen seventy-nine to be signed by the chairman. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Knoll. Any further discussion?
I have a couple of quick questions for you, Wes. After reading through this and Michelle kind of explained to me that, you know, this helps with declaring a disaster emergency to get funding and different things. So when we talk about mask mandates or some of the other Atchison County mandates of restricting gatherings, all of those things, does that help with this or help with any funding sources to show that we feel, you know what I mean? Like, I'm just curious. I mean, cause we're doing what, what the public basically is asking for, but should we as commissioners be taught correlating that to funding opportunities based on what we're doing in, in our county? I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
So, so the mandates and all that would be completely separate from this order. This order just makes it to where we can get resources from the state and FEMA. So and honestly, at this point, we've got no funding from FEMA because the CARES Act money took care of everything we needed. So and we got a hundred percent reimbursement using CARES Act money, whereas we would only got eighty percent reimbursement using FEMA money. So I don't see us getting any kind of FEMA assistance, but it still does make it to where we can get the P P supplies from the state if we're unable to. And there's times, I mean, right now it's hard to buy latex gloves right now, so we may have to put in another request from the state for latex gloves for both, for all of our agencies, so law enforcement, fire, police, the jail, every EMS, everybody. And probably about three weeks ago, I did have to order a bunch of gloves and some masking for all of those agencies that I just named off, but hopefully we will get to where we don't need to request from them.
Okay, so this resolution would just take care of our funding?
Correct. FEMA is covering the cost of all those P P supplies that I ordered from the state. They said there was a chance that, that we would have to incur those costs, but I believe FEMA is, is covering all that expense.
Okay, thank you.
Just an eligibility thing, basically.
This is just eligibility, yep.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Passes three deserve. Okay, we need an executive session for non-elected personnel. Eric, we need about forty-five minutes. Is.
You know, I'd like to.
I think they're coming down here. Yep, we'll come down.
Okay, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at one thirty P M to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B one and that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of the executive session at two forty, two fifteen P M in the commission room, first floor courthouse and those present will be the three commissioners, Pat Henderson County Counselor and Jamie Madison H R Director. Is there anyone else that needs to be included on that? Okay.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
Pat and Jamie and us.
Can you, there may be one other.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jamie's on her way now. I think there's going to be one more person.
So do I need to name, and Brian also?
That's the motion. Second by Commissioner Quinn, all in favor, signify by saying aye. We're now at executive session. The chair would entertain a motion offered. Hospital, the job of being its supervisor, is that right? Supervisor. Effective today. At forty nine thousand five hundred dollars a year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
One second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Quinn, it's seconded by Commissioner Knoll. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Congratulations.
Yeah, we're super excited to have you in that position.
We wanted to give you feedback.
Yeah. No doubt that you'll do a great job.
Thank you both.
Okay, this is the time for public comment. Any public comment? They seem, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at two nineteen PM. Move by Commissioner Knoll, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.